Good morning. If everyone could take their seats, please. Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 9:00 AM, Tuesday, December 5th, 2023 Regular Sched Board Meeting. We will begin with our invocation from Pastor Leonard Hines, and he will also lead us in a pledge of allegiance. If everyone would please stand.
Well, good morning. Let's pray together. Father in heaven, we come to thee this day, and Lord, we're grateful for all the blessings of this past year. As we move toward the celebration of your birth, Lord, we just stand in awe and amazement of how good you've been. Lord, this is a day for business to be conducted within government, and, Lord, issues that will be presented. So we ask you to meet with us in calm hearts, give clarity of mind, and, Lord, that we would honor you in all that's said and all that's done this day. Bless this meeting, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. We're going to begin with the presentation, Henry County Year in Review, from our county manager, Sherri Matthews.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. It's hard to believe, but we are getting ready to close out our 2023 year, and I am pleased to present this morning our Year in Review. Without further ado, I'll have Mr. Jamie go ahead and hit play on our video, but I want to again thank this board for the amazing opportunities that we've experienced over 2023, and looking forward to kicking off 2024 with lots of new activities and services to our residents. So thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. As we close out 2023, I am so thankful for the Henry County employees, our residents, our partners, and more importantly, our Board of Commissioners, for all of their support in making sure that we've had an amazing year. As we get ready to embark upon 2024, I want you to join me in looking at some of the accomplishments from this previous year. So Chair and Board, you can see in one year, we have accomplished much, and we have so much more to do, but it comes with, comes from the support from this board, and we are so grateful. We do have a lot of county employees here, and I always tell you all that I could be nothing without our team. And so this morning, I want to recognize all of our team members that are here that made this video possible. But before I do that, I want to personally thank the Henry County Communications Team, because this is all done in-house. We have an amazing team that captures every moment of every activity, regardless of if it's 6:00 in the morning or 10:00 at night, but our team is always there. And so, under the leadership of Melissa Robinson, I want to thank her and the entire communications team for a job well done. And then I want to pause and ask that all members of our Henry County team stand, and we give them a hand of applause for their amazing service that they've rendered during this 2023 year. Thank you. Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much, County Manager Matthews, and to all of our staff and employees here at Henry County. We truly thank you for all of the hard work that you do each and every day, and we just want you to know, we do recognize it and we do appreciate what you do. Next item on the agenda is recognition of Henry County Employee Leadership Development Graduates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This morning, I am elated to stand before this board and introduce to you all our first inaugural Leadership Development Course. As most of you all will remember, the county adopted its first-ever strategic plan about a year and a half ago. And as part of the strategic plan, we identified that we wanted leadership development to be at the heart of our organization so that we can grow leaders from within. And so, in having lots of conversations with our internal staff, we determined that we had a resident expert right here amongst us, and it's Lieutenant Matthew Marlowe, who actually provides leadership development and training to the Henry County Police Department. After much conversation, we determined that it was in our best interest to allow Lieutenant Marlowe to offer this training to our staff versus us outsourcing and bringing a consultant in. And so, I am pleased to present the inaugural class. The class members are not just the department heads. They are your assistant directors. They're your supervisors. They're your up-and-coming leaders in the organization. And so, over a course of four weeks, they were challenged with lots of leadership obstacles. They actually had a graduation, and then they also had to present a project, and I believe they created the Little City of Ola. And so, if you're interested in those presentations, they'll certainly provide that to you all. But this morning, it is all about recognizing this group and showing our board that it's important to have a strategic plan, but to also make sure we're implementing those milestones and benchmarks that we've incorporated in the plan. And so, without further ado, I will ask that the board join me at this podium here. After we call everyone, we're going to try to get a group photo. It's about 16 individuals, so we're going to try to get us lined up. But as I call your name, if you'll please come forward, and I will present you all with a coin of excellence, and then you will get to take some pictures with our commissioners. So Gregory Brown, Marquise Knox, and you can hold your applause until the end, Matthew Phillips, Tiffany Worley, Jody Swartz, Lori Mallett, Thomas Stone, Scott Morris, Brett Haynes, Tony Bryan, Alyssa Butler, Stacy Wallace, Kamau Asalam, Shatira McKinney, Abigail Hall, Donna Holder, Tracy Terrell, Kimberly Haynes, Ayana Cates, Anna Garcia Estrada, Kristy McCart, Elbert Burt Merchant, Sharon Wilson, Joshua Bryant, Tony Byrd, and Karen Deason. And hopefully, I have not left anyone off. If so, I do apologize. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, behind me stands our up-and-coming leaders within our organization. So I do want to thank you all for taking four weeks, and let me apologize, Lieutenant Marlowe. Everyone needs to know who that is. That was the trainer who really, really pushed our team to really, really get involved. And I will tell you, early on, some were volunteer. They were angry about being there, and after the fourth week, they were really excited, and they're interested in knowing when are the directors going to be a part of it. So if the commissioners are interested, let me know. We'll take you all through it as well. But I am so pleased that this team was committed to what we have stressed, where we are Henry committed. And so, I just want to take this time this morning to thank them for being the first inaugural Leadership Development Graduates. Thank you for your service.
Sherri, I was honored to have the opportunity to go and speak to this class. So it's good to see everyone here today. So where do you want us to come to? Okay. Okay. Would it be better if we stood maybe in front of here?
We can do that. Where we sit.
Okay.
Okay, we'll just go that way. Come on, y'all leaders. Want us to stand up here? And then they can be down there. Make sure you all leave this other.
All right, perfect. Two pictures, please. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. County Manager would come back forward.
Yes, ma'am. So this is... The Consent Agenda for Tuesday, December 5th at 9:00 AM. Under Fire Rescue, we have a resolution accepting a reimbursement grant from the Georgia Trauma Commission in the amount of $14,906 to reimburse the purchase of trauma equipment and emergency medical supplies for Henry County Fire Rescue. Under the Police Department, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners, accepting a donation of fitness equipment from the Desai family to the Henry County Police Department. This equipment is valued at an estimated $4,500. We also have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving a purchase of 45 N-Car radios from Loud Communications, Inc., in the amount of $324,644 for the Henry County Police Department utilizing Red Speed funds. We also have a resolution to accept a grant award in the amount of $25,000 from the United States Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Policing Services, for the Henry County Police Department to provide de-escalation training. Under the Sheriff's Department, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the acceptance of the State Criminal Alien Assistance Program Award from the Bureau of Justice Assistance in the amount of $43,309 for the Henry County Sheriff's Office with no matching funds. We also have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the acceptance of State of Georgia Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency FY24 Georgia Gang Activity Prosecution Grant in the amount of $28,876 to the Henry County Sheriff's Office with no matching funds. And then, under the SPOS Department, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the contribution of fixed assets to the Henry County Water Authority in the amount of $114,437, and authorizing the Chair or County Manager to execute all necessary documents for conveyance of fixed assets relating to Mickey D Cochran Park improvements. Madam Chair, this ends the Consent Agenda.
Questions from the board. Hearing, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the board, on the agenda is HR, Human Resources. Holly?
Okay. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. We have three resolutions. Two of them we're going to be asking for a vote. One of them is just for discussion only. The first one is to rescind a resolution that was adopted in February of 2023 that staff has determined had a few scribners errors in it. Would you like me to read it in its entirety?
Do we need to have it in the record, Stephanie?
No, ma'am. It's posted online.
Okay, all right.
The correction resolution, I will read for you. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners to amend the adoption agreement for the ACCG Defined Benefit Plan for Henry County Employees, whereas the Henry County Board of Commissioners, the employer, previously adopted the ACCG Defined Benefit Plan for Henry County Employees called the PLAN through an amended and restated adoption agreement that went into effect January 1, 2015. And whereas, Section 16.02B of the PLAN allows the employer to amend the elective provisions of the adoption agreement at any time. And whereas, the employer wishes to amend the adoption agreement to define compensation to include base pay and to exclude any compensation that does not include base pay effective for amounts paid on or after January 1, 2024. Now therefore, the Henry County Board of Commissioners adopts the attached adoption agreement, number 10, effective as provided herein. Further resolved, the Chair and/or County Manager is hereby authorized, empowered, and directed to take all further action and to execute all documents necessary to implement this resolution.
So what was the discrepancy in the first, in the first?
In the resolution, the first one that was adopted in February, that was Resolution 23-75, had language in it that said that compensation, base pay, and mandatory overtime would go towards retirement. However, we, there is no way for the county to calculate the difference between mandatory overtime and voluntary overtime. So we have to remove that language, and it will be base pay only that goes towards an employee's retirement.
Okay. Okay, well, I will in just a minute, when I finish asking questions. So was this recommended by ACCG?
This change was brought to the board in February to make the changes for, and I might have to ask Mr. David Smith to come up and help me with some of the explanation, but my understanding is just to keep our financial health in our retirement plan, we need just the base pay to go towards retirement, not overtime. And the resolution in February requested that mandatory overtime, but the county has no way to calculate a difference between a mandatory overtime and a voluntary overtime.
So David, can you elaborate?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Henry County community. Madam Chair, you want me to elaborate on why we can't calculate the mandatory overtime? So our system, our ERP system, does not separately identify what's mandatory, what's not mandatory. It just calculates overtime, and there's no way to put a code to a mandatory overtime request or a code to something different type overtime request and make that calculation in the system.
And how does that impact the overall plan with regards to the overtime piece of it?
So I'll address the first piece. So overtime is currently being calculated in the plan. What it does to our current plan is it allows for, and there's, this is my issue, it allows for spiking your pension toward the end of, or the last three years of your working toward retirement. And so, it puts a tremendous burden and liability on those that remain in the plan, that remain as current employees for us, as well as it keeps us at a, if we want to sustain the plan, it begins to make the plan less sustainable as we pay out more and more.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Commissioner Wilson?
David, I got a question. I think Holly referred to as mandatory overtime, but I think in the public safety realm, they call it the scheduled overtime. So in fire, and I'm not sure how PD schedule works now, but they have scheduled overtime. In a year, it could be up to 300 hours. So you tell me this 300 hours is not going to be included in the pension?
We're requesting to have that removed from the pension and just go solely on an employee's base pay.
So I'm not sure that's going to be, I don't think that's going to work, because when we advertise our positions, I think it's be a, Sherri, did we advertise the scheduled overtime when we advertise for firefighter positions?
I think, I think Commissioner, I think Commissioner Wilson, we advertise that base pay.
I'm not sure that we advertise the scheduled overtime, because I think it's included in that base pay. No?
No.
So the fire chief is telling me that we, I don't know what your head means. Yes, we do, or yes, just if you come up to the podium.
No, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners. As it currently stands, no, sir, the scheduled overtime that's included in the hours that we have to work every single year are not included in the advertised pay.
It is not. So, but, but if we cut out the pension on the scheduled overtime, these hours are what's required for the firefighters to work.
No, sir. They'll get paid those hours. It's only the hours that count towards their retirement.
So, but you just said that the average 300 hours a year, that that 8% is not going to their pension?
They're not going to be charged, it, it, it's not going to come out of their check, so it won't go into their retirement. Only their base pay will be affected.
But the volunteer overtime, I think, is the reason that this resolution was created, not because of scheduled overtime. And I understand that you said you couldn't separate the two, but wouldn't it be easier to just cut a separate overtime check outside of the base and the scheduled overtime check? Just anyone that works overtime voluntarily, just cut them a separate check. And that way, you don't have to combine the two.
Commissioner, my goal is to make certain that, and I've been tasked with making certain that we maintain a sustainable pension plan and a sustainable retirement plan. The firefighters, as you mentioned, with their overtime, they are being paid, but I, my goal is to exclude overtime. If there were not the practice of spiking that impacts the sustainability of this plan, I would not have brought this up as an option. The plan itself is designed to replace a percentage of your pay. It's not designed to replace your pay or to pay you above your base pay. So I'm basing those pension calculations are based on our, their three years of highest salary. And currently, over the past several years, people have been earning significantly greater than what their base pay is as it comes along. Our retirement plan is underfunded. If we continue at this pace, that liability will continue to increase. It puts a drain on our pension assets and shifts the burden to taxpayers and the younger employees that we have coming onboard. I'd like to fix this system before we can afford it.
And Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to remind the board that when this resolution was initially brought to the board for approval, the mandatory overtime was not a part of it. That was something that was added during the meeting. And so, initially, when we brought it forward, the whole idea was to remove all overtime from the final calculation for pension. What Mr. Smith is speaking to is real life. We have employees that are retiring in excess of what their base salary is. We're talking two and three times what their base salary is. And as we continue to monitor this, we're going to get to a position where we're going to be having to figure out how to fund our pension, because what's happening is that last year, individuals are working more overtime, because they know that that's going to count towards their final base salary. And so, when this was initially brought to the board, that was our concern, and I believe there was some conversation about the mandatory or voluntary overtime. And I believe there was some conversation about the mandatory or voluntary overtime that was added on. The unfortunate part is it's taken this long for us to try to figure out how to make it work. And we've worked with our vendor. It's just not possible for us to be able to calculate it. And so in lieu of us not honoring the wishes of the board, we need to rescind that so that we can get this right in our pension plan. As of today, those employees are still reaping the benefits of their overtime counting towards their salary because we have no tool or we don't have the mechanism to be able to calculate that out. And so we've got to get this corrected as we go into our upcoming fiscal year.
So on the volunteer overtime, do we have a number of, or a dollar figure what it cost us on a yearly basis on the volunteer overtime?
I do not have a dollar figure on the voluntary overtime, no sir.
And the reason we have?
Again, the system doesn't break out overtime and voluntary, scheduled. It just has overtime.
But the reason that we're having to work overtime is because of lack of personnel. Is that correct?
I repeat the question, please.
I said the reason of volunteer overtime is because we lacking personnel in line, correct?
That would be my assumption. I mean, I would defer to the fire department if it's something different.
Right. So I'd like to see the, the separation between volunteer overtime, what it costs the county versus a scheduled overtime. And look at them numbers as well, but I cannot support cutting out the scheduled overtime along with the volunteer overtime at the same time. I, I just think they need to be separated.
Our system does not currently allow us to separate voluntary overtime from scheduled overtime. It would be difficult to get to such a report.
So I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. We're not talking about cutting out overtime.
No.
We're just talking about cutting out the overtime compensation contributing towards an employee's retirement plan.
Right.
I think it's already included in. I think it is too, but.
I'm just listening to my little house. I just want folks to understand that last money that goes into a retirement plan is the money that puts the most stress on the plan. And that's regardless if it's planned or not. Because it doesn't have enough time in the plan. The key is the time the money has in the plan to be able to grow, to keep up with the withdrawals for all county employees moving forward. So spikes are something to be extremely concerned about, especially if it's happening within the last three years. So with that being said, I just want to remind everybody, I mean, we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we protect the pension from those spikes. And that is our responsibility in that. And it does concern me with those spikes. And we're not trying to take anything away from anybody. It's just we have to protect the plan itself for everybody so that you have something to live off of when you retire later down the road. That's, that's all I really have to say.
Commissioner Lewis? Commissioner Thomas?
David, would you please define for the public and for those who are listening, the term spiking? And how is used or how are you using it?
So pension spiking, the term itself refers to an increase in your salary of five percent or greater toward the last few years of your compensation. And what it does for us is we have several, and again, this is what our current policy allows. So people should maximize that benefit currently, and that's why I'm trying to fix it. The spiking is when you receive five percent or greater in your compensation, which, over the last three years of your career. And that's what we're trying to avoid.
The spiking process can be accomplished other ways, am I right? Beyond just overtime, be it volunteer or mandatory?
There are several items that are included that could increase your compensation. Overtime is one of them. We also currently add a percentage of our sick leave, I believe, that goes into it. If there are any bonuses or additional incentives that are provided throughout the year, that could also get included in your compensation.
What about promotions as well?
As well as promotions that go along with that at the end, or our salary increases, which we've seen a greater than 10% just recently.
I think my concern is that, as stated, we do have a responsibility to fund our retirement. And I thank you for trying to make sure we do that. But as we are taking the time to try and make sure that our men and women who are serving, are managed, that's the only word I can think of now, to not have the spiking. We should also consider in other avenues as well, as you stated, including these last minute promotions, including these bonuses and other areas. If there's any way for us to always take care of our service officers, we should find a way to do it. So the question would be, and I don't think we've done a good job in managing all the areas where spiking is taking place. My question would be, since there is volunteering that's taking place, is there a way for them to contribute to their own retirement from some of this overtime that's taking place during their time period here? And help them calculate how that would benefit themselves if they made some type of contributions from it?
Commissioner Thomas, if you don't mind, if you could repeat that question. But prior to repeating the question, I wanted to make a point of clarification because your initial question addressed what other items other than overtime could be included. And I don't want the public to know, or I don't want the public to think, is, is the word I'll use, that we're giving out bonuses, just giving out bonuses and just giving out promotions. That's not, that's not what we're doing. These were planned compensation increases, which do get included in your, your salary toward the, the last part or the 12 months of the career.
No ma'am, that was one thing to say. There are other ways to accomplish this spiking, other than the one area we're talking about today.
That is correct.
And that's what you clarified for us. And I did want to clarify as we manage this particular area, we need to be just as well and just as cautious in managing other areas as well. So that was accomplished. So my question is?
Yes ma'am.
We know that there is some overtime taking place, be it voluntary or mandatory. Is there a way for the, for our individuals to contribute themselves out of that overtime into their retirement? So they can have a better understanding of what their retirement will look like in the future, if they choose to do so?
So Commissioner, they already do. If, if they're non-public safety, they contribute seven percent. If they're public safety, they contribute eight percent. The point is when they double or triple their salary in the last three years, the plan doesn't have time for growth. The plan is established to grow over your career, be it 20, 25 plus years, so that it has time and it expects you to get promotions, get, get a higher salary as you move. But we may have an employee that makes $50,000 a year, but their last three years, they worked so much overtime, they've earned $150,000.
I understand.
And that truly impacts our retirement.
So maybe we need to look at how this retirement is calculated. Should it be recalculated over 80% of the time, or 80% of what your salary was? And find a way to put in the other 20 for those last two or three years? Are we looking at the wrong formula? That would be my question. Because I see us trying to protect our retirement benefit, which is what we should do. But I'm trying to find an alternative to help out our service officers and the ones that we are really talking about, our public safety, to protect that and make sure that we're not taking something from them in their retirement that they really should get because of the services they render. I'm just looking for another alternative. So the question is, do we need to look at another formula? Should retirement be calculated not on the last three years, but over the, the major part of the years that you served? That would help with the spiking. Question is, is the formula correct?
Yes, well, I mean, I feel that formula is correct. Our provider believes that it is. And I think one, one issue could be, you don't always know when you're going to retire. You may plan to work 35 years and retire, but you have a life change and you need to retire at 27 years. So calculating it upfront sounds good if you plan to work for 30 years, but something may happen during those plans that might alter those numbers.
Okay, Commissioner Angler?
I might need Chief Burdette or Chief Ammerman to come up because I don't know the answer to this question. When, um, it has to do with alternative sources of helping our public safety fund retirement that is outside of the county, meaning the POAB. I'm not sure what the fire department's equivalent is. My question is this, is there a way for us from the financial side to be able to do a withholding from the check for public safety to help fund their POAB retirement? Or is there one equivalent to the fire department? The answer may be no, but I think, I wanted to make sure I at least asked the question.
There is, for PD, it's $20 a month. I don't know what it is for fire.
There is a Georgia State Firefighters Pension, which is $25 a month. Kind of works the same way with here. There's investment period, you know, of 20 plus years with the return on there afterwards, once you reach a certain age.
So can we increase the, can we increase the amount that's being contributed to that? So if you're doing 20 a month, it cannot be increased, okay?
That's voluntary, totally fixed. Now, the state does look at it and does adjustments in it periodically. In fact, they just had one where it went up, but that's a fixed amount.
It's a fixed amount.
If the county wanted, well, it'd be $20 a month. You calculate every cop or every fireman for that, and if you wanted to make that an added benefit. But Commissioner Thomas's question, so if we got a guy that's works $100,000 in overtime and are no longer taking that eight percent, I, I think what your question is, yeah, let them take that money that we didn't take for the pension and let them invest it somewhere else. At some point, the county is taking care of their, their employees, but at some point, they have to do something for themselves too. If they're in a position, we're going to make in 50, 75, $100,000 in overtime in a year, they need to invest it themselves for future.
So to that point, we do have an outside investment plan that they can use here through the county if they wanted to.
Yeah, the 457 plan.
And I think that needs to be brought up. So that is, that is a wonderful alternative where they can defer their payment to go there, which will also help reduce their taxable income, which is a big thing too. So they're reducing their taxable income and they're putting savings away. And they can direct that money themselves how they want to invest it towards retirement. Thank you. That was huge.
Commissioner Wilson?
So if we changed, if we changed the base pay for fire and PD, including the scheduled overtime and the base pay, that would eliminate all the issues?
I think that creates a whole different set of issues. This plan is countywide. It's not just for fire and PD. It covers every single department that has overtime, which is almost every department. Granted, public safety eats up most of the overtime. If we increase the base pay, we still have some FSLA issues where we have to make sure that we pay them overtime. We can't just up their base pay and do away with the overtime for hourly employees.
I think the comment that Director Ammerman made is something that we should explore. It makes sense. So we're going to move forward. I'm calling for a motion to rescind this resolution. Can I get a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor. All opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
I'd like to call for a motion to, for adoption of the agreement for ACCG Defined Benefit Plan for employees as it relates to base pay. Now, before we do this particular one, is this the one that we could explore? What Chief Ammerman's suggestion is, or do we need to approve this and then look into the recommendation that Director Ammerman made earlier?
Yes, Madam Chair, we need to approve this because we just rescinded the other one. And so this is the cleanup for that one, yes. And then we can certainly pursue what Director Ammerman recommended.
Okay, alright. So, um, is there a motion to approve thi- this resolution to correct the previous resolution we rescinded?
Motion.
Got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor. Um, all opposed. Motion carries. So what I would like to direct staff, Sherry, to do is to look into options of how, because we're not taking away overtime, so let's make sure that that's very clear. We, 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 but, you know, I guess basically if you're going to spike your, your, your pension, then you should, maybe there should be a plan that they can use some of that overtime money to pay into some type of plan. So if we can explore that, so then that way that they can may, have the best of both worlds. They can get the overtime and then have the pension that they need to be able to provide for their families. Yes, mhm.
Sherry, when you said that, meaning?
Fire and PD would like me to be there to help with David, if David needs to be there. I will be more than glad to help explain how that part of it works along with Holly and them. Because I mean, I do that every day.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Angler. Hey Holly, you have one more item?
I have one more. This is for discussion only because there's a, a few things in this that we're still trying to work out on the staff side. But it's, it would, it's going to be a resolution that I plan to bring to the board to look at a COLA for our retirees. And I have worked with ACCG and with Mr. Smith to make sure that the numbers are there. We're really just trying to clean up the resolution so that I give you a, a clean, ready document. Our proposal is to offer a 2% COLA to all retirees, starting on January 1, 2024. The caveat would be that you must have been retired for at least two years as of December 31, 2023. And then every two years, the staff will bring back to the board a request for additional COLA after discussion with finance to make sure that it's sustainable. So this 2% would just be starting for January 24 and then looked at every two years moving forward with board approval for each one.
Okay, and so you're going to bring a resolution back before the board in the first meeting in January?
Yes ma'am, I just wanted to make sure that if there was any discussions or input and that we have a very clean document and plan for you.
Okay, is there, are there any questions from the board?
David and I had some conversation around this a couple of months ago. I think this is wonderful to be able to look at doing a COLA for those that are retired, especially when you do what I do every day for work with individuals that have pensions. With that being said, I just wanted to make sure that we understand this is a discretionary COLA every two years on the even year. It is not mandatorily going to happen. We're going to be able to look at the budget, see where we stand, and then be able to give that COLA, correct?
Yes sir, and if you do it beginning in, in January of '24, the, the cost increase to the county would be about $240,000. However, the resolution that you just adopted will more than make up for that difference.
Okay, I, I want to tell y'all, thank y'all. I think that's a, a huge win for the retirees and future retirees of Henry County. So thank y'all.
Commissioner Lewis?
No, and that's, that was the point I was going to bring up. So the, the resolution that we just rescinded and then adopted, this is the point of it.
Yes sir.
This is the point, so that we can make sure that we provide for our retirees and we have enough money to provide for our retirees. When we see that the cost of everything has gone up, we can still go back and make sure that we take care of our employees that, you know, you know, did great work for Henry County.
Yes sir.
So this is the entire point, so much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
So you'll bring this back the first meeting in January?
Yes ma'am.
For us to review? Please make sure that any, once you get it prepared, that you get it to the commissioners before the January? once you get it prepared, that you get it to the commissioners before the January meeting, um, so that they can start to review and reach out to you all if they have any questions or concerns prior to it coming to a vote in January.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the police department. Lieutenant Powell?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board. I'm Lieutenant William Powell. This morning, I'm here to present a proposal for the placement of a memorial marker on Jonesboro Road in memory of Sergeant James Gilbert. On the morning of May second, two thousand and four, while on duty, Sergeant J. Gilbert tragically lost his life when his patrol car struck the back of a tractor trailer. This terrible incident happened off the I-75 off-ramp to Jonesboro Road in McDonough, Georgia. Sergeant Gilbert began his career with the Henry County Police Department on August second, nineteen ninety-three, and throughout his career, he has held several positions where he was recognized for his outstanding leadership skills. He was a training coordinator with the police department, and for many officers, myself included, Sergeant Gilbert laid the groundwork for their future. In his career and by his example, Sergeant Gilbert led the way for the officers and supervisors by steadfast dedication to duty and his commitment to his family. To honor Sergeant James Curtis Gilbert, Jr., the Henry County Police Department has requested approval from the Board of Commissioners to place a memorial marker on Jonesboro Road east of Foster Drive. Thank you. The sign on the left is an example of what the memorial marker will look like in both size and the verbiage. And the map on the right is the approximate location where the marker will be placed. I'll be working with the DOT on the placement of the sign, but it's going to be posted on the southbound side of Jonesboro Road east of Foster Drive. This morning, I'm asking for the board's approval to authorize the placement of Sergeant James Gilbert's memorial marker. Here today is some of his family, Sergeant James Gilbert, his son, uh, his mother, Joanne, sitting beside him, and his sister, Missy, over next to the window.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, I'd like to call for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, got a second?
Second.
All in favor. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Approaches, we will schedule a date to actually have the marker placed and we'll ask that the Gilbert family be present for the unveiling of the memorial sign.
That'd be awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. Uh, before you is a resolution approving a budget amendment and awarding RFP twenty-four dash thirteen for construction of the Henry County Aquatic Center. SPOLOST four was approved by voters in November of twenty nineteen. A new aquatic center is an approved SPOLOST four, or SPOLOST, whoa, SPOLOST five project. The purchasing department solicited proposals for construction of a new aquatic center and water park and posted RFP twenty-four dash thirteen on the websites of the county, Team Georgia Marketplace, and ACCG GLGA. Three proposals were received, reviewed, and rated by a review committee. The top two rated proposers were interviewed by the review committee. Integrated Construction and Nobility, Inc. of Whitesburg, Georgia, was the highest rated proposer. Integrated Construction and Nobility submitted a best and final offer that includes alternates two, three, four, five, and six. The total amount, their base bid, including the alternates, is fifty million, two hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. I've listed what the alternates include there. And funding for a budget amendment in the amount of thirty-one million is available through the SPOLOST five tax collections. I wanted to go through and give a list of, uh, just a, a brief list of their extensive experience. Um, Integrated Construction and Nobility, uh, along, teamed with Aquatic Design Systems, who is the pill buil- pool builder. They teamed together and did the Clayton County International Water Park. Um, so they have extensive experience doing something very similar to what we're doing. Integrated Construction also with Aqua Design did the Linwood Park Splash Pad, the Briarwood Park Pool, uh, the Wild Horse Creek Park, and that's just to name a few. Aquatic Design Systems, uh, did the Clayton County International Water Park, Columbus City Service Center Complex, which was a fifty-meter and twenty-five-yard pool. The Sea Island Beach Club Aquatics, which had a lap pool, two free-form large pools, wading pool, and the Cherokee Aquatic Center, again, that has a fifty-five, or fifty-meter and a twenty-five-meter indoor pool and an outdoor water park with a lazy river, two slides. And I've included some pictures. Uh, that's the Spivey Splash area in Clayton County that was recently completed by this team. This shows the Sea Island Beach Club. The bottom picture shows the extensive, uh, project and, and their experience there. And I've also included the Cherokee Aquatic Center picture. So you can see it's very similar to what we are planning to do uh, with both the aquatic center indoor portion and the outdoor water park portion. And I wanted to also No, I need to play the video. This is the video of, that shows our state-of-the-art aquatic center. All right, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. JP's come up. He's very excited about this project, so we love his enthusiasm. And I also have David Smith for any financial questions you may have.
Okay. JP, did you have anything that you wanted to add to the presentation?
As you can see, this is a beautiful facility for Henry County. Um, it will address a lot of needs. I hear a lot of times, um, well, why can't we have this in Henry County? Why do I have to go to Atlanta? Why do I have to drive up to Cobb, to Gwinnett, um, to all these places up north, or even go down to Clayton County? We use Clayton County for our summer camp every year because we don't have a facility. Um, this allows us to have what we need for our residents and to bring other people into our county. Um, this is an investment in the county, it's an investment in the people, and it's an investment in the future that we want to see here in Henry County. So we're very excited about this, and we think that it's a huge benefit for the county and for this area.
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, I mean, the citizens voted for this, uh, through the SPOLOST five, and you're absolutely right. Our, our citizens deserve first class, and we have to invest in our parks and recreation facilities. We just did the beautiful ribbon cutting at Mickey D. Coquering Park. Uh, I mean, beautiful facility, top-notch. Commissioner Thomas is just a, it's a beautiful park in your district. Beautiful, beautiful. Uh, and we just want to continue. We're looking forward to the recreation facility that's coming, uh, on Mount Carmel. That's going to be a beautiful facility. And why should we
Stop now.
Stop there. This is SPOLOST dollars or people that are stopping in our county, spending money, which allows us to build a facility of this type. So, uh, really excited about it.
And I'll add, we're in the middle of our Comprehensive Parks Master Plan. And one of the things that the consultant continuously says, and he said this, you know, to each, each of you when he met, a lot of these counties fund their projects through SPOLOST. That's how they're able to get the facilities that they have in these counties that we so frequent because they have the facilities that we want, that we want to bring here. And this allows us to do the same.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Wilson? You're right, it is a beautiful facility from the videos and pictures in the back. SPOLOST five, when it was passed, I think this project was allocated for twenty-two million dollars. You just presented a fifty-million-dollar price tag. That's a hundred and forty percent increase in price. So remind me, where are we getting an additional hundred and forty percent increase in the price? Where does that money come from?
It's coming from the SPOLOST five tax collections. We have been fortunate enough to have a good economy, and we have been collecting, um, ahead of projection. And, uh, Mr. Smith did take a look at a conservative projection of where we will wind up and is confident, uh, that we will more than have enough money to cover this additional cost.
So I'm looking on the SPOLOST list, SPOLOST five, on the incomplete, or the projects have not been bidded out yet, and they are transportation and public safety. That's what we hear every day, let's improve our public safety and what we're going to do about transportation. And so those, those projects on the list equate to a close to, I believe, if the list is updated, close to sixty-six million dollars that have not been bidded out. Now, if we have a hundred and forty percent increase in those projects as well, that's going to give us an additional ninety-two million, which those projects remaining on the list is going to be a hundred and fifty-eight million. So I'm not sure what the collection rate's going to be from here to the end of SPOLOST, but we can project a lot of stuff. But the downturn in the economy means we're going to get an aquatic center and we're not going to get our transportation projects completed. I would like to see all the transportation projects completed and all our public safety projects completed. Now, with the overages in SPOLOST dollars, what can we do with the overages other than put it to other SPOLOST projects? Can we put it toward resurfacing? That's not on the list. If that's the case, we could take the overages and resurface a lot of roads for the overages that we're going to be collecting. Now, I, we talked about physical responsibility on the, for the employees and their pension in our early presentation about the pension fund. So this is a physical responsibility for the board to reach out and say, this is what we need to do first. Let's take care of our public safety, transportation, and we can go back and revisit the twenty-two-million-dollar aquatic center later. Okay, go, okay, go ahead, Commissioner Lewis.
Uh, excuse, uh,
Uh, did you have another question? Well, I'm not finished, ma'am. Okay, well, you stopped, we didn't know. Well, David walked up, I didn't know if he wanted to add. Okay. And then, then on top of all that, we have the operation cost, or what this costs every year. Now, I hadn't seen that number yet. But those are, those are my, those are my comments. And I'll yield the floor to someone else.
Okay, so Commissioner Robinson, did you have any comments or anything?
Hold on.
Okay.
Did he fit you?
I think Kevin has some questions. I'll let him go first, but I do, yeah, just come back to it.
Okay, go ahead, Kevin.
No, I, I don't have any questions. I, I have, have comments. Um, we know that we are in an inflationary time period. Uh, the renovations for Mickey D. Coquering, I think it was originally scheduled for like one-point-three million, ended up over three million. So it was about two and a half times what the original allocation was. The North Mount Carmel Recreation Center originally budgeted for six million, fifteen and a half million, two and a half times. This, this calculation is about two-point-three times, so slightly less than what we've seen in the past, uh, couple of iterations. But the bottom line is, this is a SPOLOST project that was voted on by the citizens of Henry County. We are going to be a board that completes projects. We are going to be a board that executes what our citizens want. We are going to be a board that builds the aquatic center that our citizens ask for. So I do understand that there are other projects that will come up that we need to address, and we are going to address them and we are going to build them because we said they were. There's a fire station that we allocated the money for that came in over double what it was originally allocated, and we're going to build it. We are going to build the projects that we said we're going to build, we're going to build the projects that the public asks us to build. This is a first-in-class, best-in-class project that we need to do because the citizens of Henry County ask us to do it. This is not a district project, this is a county-wide project. The citizens of Henry County deserve a first-class project. That is what we are going to deliver. So I challenge anybody else to come up here and say that we are being fiscally irresponsible. No, we are doing what we said we're going to do.
Commissioner Angler?
So, my first question, David, I'm going to ask you to come back up in a second. I'm sorry to ask JP a first, a couple of questions first. JP, thank you. Um, so you mentioned the comp plan. I just want to make sure that this is addressed because I know we're still working on the Comprehensive Parks and Rec Plan. With that being said, with what you all have done initially with that, how does this, can you help explain, how does this help address that need of the comp plan? And where does this need fall within which you are seeing in the early evaluations of the Parks Comprehensive and Rec Plan?
So in all the public meetings that we've had, um, as well as some of the survey results, and they're still coming in, so please fill out the survey if you haven't online. Um, everybody wants aquatic amenities here in this county, and we have zero. Um, and so this will address some of that need. We will need more later down the road, but this will address some of that need, and it is in there.
So, thank you. A follow-up question is, with the new facility, it does appear that there will be space that businesses can also help use, which will also drive additional dollars towards our hotels and towards our businesses of Henry County, which we have a responsibility to as well. Because, as reminded, SPOLOSH money is driven by outside folks driving a lot of dollars here in this county. Is that the intention also of this building, to be multipurpose?
Yes, that's one of the main, one of the main reasons outside of providing for our residents is the school system. They have to, they don't have a pool to use as well. So we're going to host meets, we're going to host state meets, we're going to host region meets. Recreational state meets, we'll host and bring in people from all over the state and the region, in the southeast region, to utilize this facility. That is our plan, that is our goal, is for, to bring in those people into our county so we can continue to collect those taxes from the SPOLOSH and people coming in.
So not only is it an investment for our citizens and constituents that are here, it is an investment towards our future SPOLOSH dollars that we're going to have in. That's the point I wanted to make. Not only is it important for our citizens, it's also important for the future and the health of our SPOLOSH moving forward. David, a couple of questions, if you don't mind, please, sir. The state allowed us to start having state overruns with SPOLOSH dollars, and that is due directly to what we've been seeing with projects not having enough money to be funded. Is that correct?
That is correct. The state does allow us to, because of the cost of overruns, to not only collect during our period, but to collect over the amount that we originally projected.
Okay, and one thing that I want to make sure, because we, and y'all have heard me make this comment before, we've had a lot of, we talk about inflation cost, and what I want to say is, this is not entirely driven by inflation. Part of it is. A lot of it, though, is we have supply and demand issues very much going on when it comes to building materials, and those costs have gone up exponentially. That is not the fault of our voters. That is just the economic environment that we are in. So I want to tell y'all, thank y'all very much, and thank you for answering the questions.
Commissioner Thomas, go ahead.
First of all, thank you for your presentation. And David, since you're standing here, I just have a question. I know that we have, in our different SPOLOSHs that we've had, we've had some overruns. Can you give us an idea of how much of an overrun we've been trending? So it gives a better comfort level that we are able to do this. Like in SPOLOSH 4, did we collect more than what we had projected? And about how much, if you have an estimate?
So for SPOLOSH 4, we did collect more than we projected, about 30 million more than projection. Here in SPOLOSH 5, I'm currently projecting to collect approximately 50 million more than what we originally projected, and the amounts continue to increase as we're looking. And as we go into our next SPOLOSH, we're projecting to collect closer to 300 million, 350 million dollar amount, and so we're working on that currently. But I did, so that's in response to your question. So in each year, we've been able, and Henry County is unique in this, I want to make that statement too. Even during COVID, our collections were greater than what the state was receiving overall. And so Henry County is a destination point, for some reason.
And I wanted to just highlight that because I know when it comes down to numbers, you have done these numbers exceptionally well.
Yes, ma'am.
And that we can afford to do this, and we do want to bring first quality here. In addition to that, we put dollars into JP Mosley Park for this golf there. And because of that, we've had the number-one person in the United States, and I think the number-two person in the United States, come to JP Mosley Park in Henry County to play. And we've met people there from California who came to JP Mosley Park to play their courts. And we were told, I'm not sure where we are now, that we already rank number nine in the state, but the players say, you will probably be number one within the next six months. And I'm simply saying, when we put the money out there for high quality, it brings in the caliber of people that bring more money to the county. And this has proven to be so, today are now trying to plan a regional event, he hasn't even had time to get all that on the calendar, and a national event at JP Mosley Park because of that investment. So I do support the investment because the investment gives back to the county, and we have evidence that when we go, not just with the minimum, but put high quality and high standards in place, it's for our citizens, they get to enjoy it, and the money does come back to the county so we can invest in other projects as well.
Absolutely, and, you know, this, this project really would be self-sufficient if it causes a multipurpose. You're talking about swim meets, it could, we, not only state, but national. And, you know, with regards to public safety, I'm going to always make sure, to my best of my ability, hopefully with the support of this board, that public safety will never go lacking. I think we've done a lot over the last three years making sure that public safety has had equipment. We are going to continue to build fire stations, we're going to continue to make sure that we take care of public safety. So, public safety will never lack, under my leadership.
Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you. Well, I wasn't here for the design, but I would have liked to see the rooftop. Because, you know, our businesses, you know, that can be a income for the county because they can use that for evening balls or meetings. If I missed that part, I didn't...
Yes, so it's there, we have rooftop terrace on the side where the screen is. That we will host events. We plan to have our grand night gala there, opening up the Aquatic Center there, so.
Okay, you're saying it's closed in?
There's an area that is, you can walk into, but there's an outdoor area as well.
Okay, so it's not at the top?
It's not at the very top, no.
Okay, that's what I was talking, at the top. But I do agree that, you know, there's rising costs, and our citizens are asking for top quality. And I just think that we just can't continue to let things linger. So thank each and every one of you for the hard work that you have done. Because a lot of things that are coming to me, they're going to other counties when they can do it right here, and we're talking about quality of life for our citizens. And I just don't want them to have to go to Clayton County unless they just choose to, but they have the choice of having something here at home. We're always going to take care of public safety, and I think every time something comes up that has been a recommendation, we have been very supportive. And we definitely, you can tell with this board, that we're going to back the blue to ensure that they have everything that they need. And if, and I love how earlier we were able to compromise to say, hey, how can we alter to make sure that they have funding to go this manner? And that's something that we're here to do as the Board of Commissioners, to be that support. I also want to charge my colleagues, when we're talking about SPOLOSH and we're talking about our infrastructure, to make sure that our roads, I want us to kind of look at, instead of splitting, because when we're talking about the ratings of the road, we have some areas that have SPOLOSH dollars, and we want to make sure that we're covering the entire Henry County. Because maybe in Locust Grove, maybe in Hampton, you have monies, but there's other locations that are still considered Henry County that we need to make sure that we look at. So all in all, we are, should be focused on the quality of life that our citizens want. Before this Aquatic Center, again, thank you guys so much. This is a need, and we need to move forward, instead of just putting a halt on anything when it's going to provide quality of life for our citizens. So thank you, David, to ensure, but I just, I'm like, I'm going to get like Commissioner Thomas, can you find us some more money so we can get some of these roads outside of certain areas that we can go ahead and take care of as well?
I'd like to ask Rocket to come up and talk about incomplete SPOLOSH projects.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. Of course, sorry about my voice, I'm a little bit under the weather. Of course, this is one project that has not been completed, of course. We do have, as Commissioner Wilson mentioned, some transportation projects that are not completed, but pretty much everything that we have is SPOLOSH 5, or everything is SPOLOSH 5 and T-SPOLOSH, we're on, in some phase, either design, roadway, or construction. On T-SPOLOSH projects, I can tell you that we're very close to bid out the McDonough Parkway. That's the one in District 3, which goes from, basically from 42 to 155 with a bridge over 155. We hopefully get the permit this week or next week on that one. As soon as we get the permit, we'll put it out for bid. On Mill Road is another T-SPOLOSH, we already staked it out, and we're going to be starting riding roadway on that project. Jonesboro Road, Jonesboro Road is a very needed project, it's a T-SPOLOSH. Radway plans are being completed, and here pretty soon, first of next year, we're going to start staking out that project as well. And then, of course, we have Furview, Furview, which is in District 2. That one is in design, we're about to get all the utilities. We've got the water, we've been coordinating water and snapping shoals. So once we finalize that, we can move into the roadway. And then we got some projects in District 1 we're working on. Hopefully be paving on, next week on Peaksville, that's a very needed project. That road, Commissioner Chair, we started back in '07, the first phase, and it's a, it took us a few SPOLOSHs, but we completed that road. So we do have pretty much a lot of projects very close to construction. So next year is going to, definitely going to be a big, a big year for projects under construction for transportation.
Thank you. I'd like to call for a motion to approve.
I'm going to approve the Aquatic Center.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Officer Braswell, would you come forward to present?
This was an item that was, that's going to be added to the agenda, and I will let Officer Braswell explain.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Officer Braswell, Henry County Police Department. This year, we are hosting our first Holidays with Heroes. It's to replace the typical Shop with a Cop event where we take kids and families in need Christmas shopping this year. We put it out, accepting donations. We received a total donations of $7,500 from businesses in Henry County. That money was then deposited into Henry First. We partnered with DFAX and a friend's house, and we are going to service 37 kids here in Henry County, where we are going to take them Christmas shopping this year. I let DFAX select the children that they felt needed to be serviced, and also the a friend's house kids, that way no one will be left out. This event is going to be held on December 16th, where we're going to meet up at Jason T. Harper Park, take the kids to Target for a shopping trip, meet back up at Jason T. Harper, and provide a hot meal to them and their families.
Okay, and so you are asking the board to approve?
To return the money that we deposited into Henry First, which is the $7,500.
Okay, in order for you all to complete your project?
Correct.
Okay. Can I get a motion? How the motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Any questions from the board? All in favor, motion carries. Thank you. Is that right, Stephanie?
I missed who made the motion, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Robinson?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and Commissioner Anglin, second.
Thanks.
Okay. Stephanie, do we have anyone, we don't have anyone sign up for upcoming? Okay. Upcoming meeting is January 3rd, is a Wednesday due to the holiday. At 9:00 a.m. would be our regular scheduled board meeting. January 16th at 6:30 is the regular scheduled board meeting. We have, I'd like to call for a motion to enter into executive session for litigation and real estate. Can I get a motion? Okay, got a motion, can I get a second? Got a motion, a second, all in favor. Motion carries. We're going to go into executive session, and we will return. We're going to go into executive session, and we will return.
I'd like to give a motion for us to reconvene from executive session.
So move.
On the second?
On the second.
All in favor? Okay. Also like to call for a motion to approve the affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? So a couple of items that we need to bring forward. Commissioner Thomas was in executive session during this time and fell ill, so she had to leave. I'd like to call for a motion to allow our county manager to enter into an agreement with Peatmont Bank regarding real estate. Can I get a motion to approve?
Say it. To approve.
Okay, motion is second, all in favor? Motion carries. The other item on the agenda is that I'd like to direct staff, county manager, to look at bringing back to the board in our January meeting options for increasing impact fees. And so if you could make sure that you have something before us first meeting in January. And I'd like to, anything else I need?
No ma'am, this will be the final meeting, correct?
This is the final meeting for the year.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
There we go. Thank you.
Thank you.